This is the Thursday, October 1st, 2020 meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting's been relocated from the council chambers at Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format, and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting to the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, Courier News, on the township website, and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: link to the virtual meeting via WebEx and a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available through the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicants' witnesses have finished presenting, at which time, the chair will ask for a comment. Now, I believe you want to give some instructions for public input.
Yes, that's correct. Instructions for the public input for those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two there are two options. Please press the raise hand button to use this feature. Click on the word "participant" icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participant's window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon, which will place a small hand symbol next to your name in that participant list. Or use the chat function. Either use the default, which is "everyone," or chat Mark Healy. Do not chat Christine Woodbury, as she is unable to review messages during the meeting, and do not use the Q&amp;A function, as that section will not be checked during the meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star 3. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have the opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if on WebEx, please press the lower hand button. If calling in, please press star 3 again.
Okay, could we proceed with the roll call?
Okay.
Could we proceed now with the calling and roll?
Okay, Anthony Caldwell.
Yes.
Laura Grauman.
Here.
Bruce McCracken. Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenfeld.
Here.
Robert Shepherd.
Here.
Joel Reese.
Here.
Cheryl Bethia.
Here.
Richard Prokanic.
Here.
Unal Lakhir.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here. We can move on to resolutions. Faris Faris Jerus, ZBA 2000013. Is there a motion for Yeah, a second.
One second. Okay, Anthony Caldwell.
Yes.
Laura Grauman.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenfeld.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. The next one is 7507 Properties, ZBA 190006.
I moved it.
Need a motion for approval.
I moved it, sir.
And a second.
I'll second.
Call the board.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Laura Grauman.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd.
Yes.
Chairman Thomas.
Yes. And the final one, NYSMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, ZBA 1900036.
I moved it, sir.
I'll second.
Anthony Caldwell.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yeah.
Gary Rosenfeld.
Yes.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Cheryl Bethia.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas, I think we just lost, because he's got a little yellow dot there. Okay, from where I'm sitting, it looks as if Mr. Thomas may be experiencing operational difficulties. If we could please just give him a couple minutes to sign off and sign back in. There you are, sir. Mr. Thomas, I called your name for the resolution.
I vote yes. For some reason, I got really cut off on air. All right, and then hearing's second part of the agenda. Si Data Mandir Incorporated, ZBA 1900037, Preliminary Final Major Site Plan with C and D variances in which the applicant wants to construct 28,970 square foot place of worship at 583 South Middlebush Road, Somerset Block 436.01, Lot 6.03 in the agricultural zone. It's carried to November 5th, 2020. No further notification for tonight.
Mr. Thomas, if you can hear me, we seem to have lost your face and your voice. If you could sign, give us, come back in when you get a chance. While we're waiting for Mr. Thomas to come back in, I just want to read the hearing again, just to make sure the outside people heard everything. So, we have Si Data Mandir Incorporated, ZBA 1900037, Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan with C and D variances in which applicant wants to construct a 28,970 square foot place of worship at 583 South Middlebush Road, Somerset, Lot 36.01, Lot 6.03 in Zone A. This matter has been carried to November 5th, 2020 with no further notification needed. I still don't see Mr. Thomas, so I'm going to read the next one. Data Bagwan Mignan Institute. Okay. Just give me one second, please, so I can put up the side data notice for anybody in the anybody in the audience that wishes to copy that information down. Okay, members of the public that are here for the side data meeting, I have projected on the screen the November 5th, 2020 zoning board meeting. The information for those of you that wish to participate on this application is as follows. To sign in via a link, you can go to h t t p as in Peter, s as in Sam, colon, backslash, backslash Franklin, twp nj dot webex dot com, backslash Franklin, twp nj backslash onstage, backslash g dot P H P question mark, m t i d, all of that is capital, equal sign, e seven d b zero b nine f b c three d e one five nine two d three two eight six five nine e two zero six one b d c b. For those of you that do not have internet access, you may join the meeting by dialing the auto conference call. Number is one four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight. And that access code is one two nine seven two zero nine four nine seven. I will leave this up on the screen while I read the next hearing for those of you that wish to copy it down. Mr. Thomas, are you back in? I see you. Can you speak?
I see. I hear you. I don't know where.
Okay. Would you like for me to read the next one, or would you wish to take over, Chairman?
Well, let me try. I keep getting bumped out, though. I don't know what's happening. The hearing for
I can read it on your behalf if you wish. At least then we can start the meeting, okay? The next meeting that we're going to, the next hearing is Dadab Bagwan Mignan Institute, ZBA 1900040. It is a D3 conditional use variance, a C variance, and site plan in which applicant is asking to construct a 21,083 square foot place of worship with a parking lot and a five-foot monument sign at 60 South Middlebush Road, Somerset, Block 37.02, Lot 46.03 in Zone Agricultural. I would ask for a moment, please, while I bring upon the participants that are with this hearing. Okay, at this time, I've brought on who I believe, oh, I forgot, I don't see Elizabeth Dolan. Okay, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lanford, so he can make sure that everybody who needs to be on this hearing is on, okay?
Very good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This matter was continued to tonight from your last hearing. At the last hearing, there was a question raised by attorneys for adjoining property owners concerning the issue of jurisdiction. That issue was addressed, and because of the lateness of the evening, the matter was in fact adjourned. I received a telephone call earlier this evening from your board attorney, who indicated that one of the attorneys representing an objector may have an additional issue regarding the issue of jurisdiction. Before I get into my opening statement, I'm wondering whether we should address that at this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would agree that as a procedural matter, the matter should be discussed beforehand. Is Mr. Asadorian on the line? Can he unmute himself? Okay, Mr. Asadorian, your floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Gregory Asadorian from the Law Firm Price, Me Shomay Yar Minio, on behalf of John Warwick III and Mary Ellen Warwick. We did discuss some jurisdictional issues last meeting with respect to the notice and the publication. Upon further review of the application or additional issues which need to be brought to the board's attention, the first one is that pursuant to the site plan application, the first page is listed, a certified list of property owners. One property owner it does not list is the county is the county. This property abuts a county road, and the MLUL specifically at Sector 4755B-12P states that when a property abuts a county road, the county planning board must be provided with notice of the application. More importantly, a review of the site plan on the second page shows that the applicant is proposing a conservative conservation preservation easement along its property and also along Block 37.02, Lot 65, which is owned by the township of Franklin, as well as Block 37.02, Lot 46.04, which is owned by Ross Holding, which is Snyder Farm. There are abundance of cases that state that when a easement abuts or enters upon a neighboring property, a 200-foot list has to also be received, requested and received for those lots. Since the site plan shows the proposed easement not only on the applicant's property, but also on two adjacent properties, the applicant was required to obtain a 200-foot list for each of those lots and serve the property owners in accordance with the MLUL. For this reason, we respectfully request and submit that the notice is sufficient.
Mr. Lanford, you kept with fun. I think there's two separate issues there. And just to paraphrase from the board, one is whether the county, Somerset County Planning Board was properly notified, and the other was whether easement, which is indicated on Sheet 2 of the site plan, requires additional notice. It is, shows that it encompasses two additional lots. Lots are Lot 46.04 and Lot 65, which would require the 200-foot tax assessive list for those properties as well. Mr. Lanford, the floor is yours.
Let me deal with these issues separately. First of all, I provided to you at the previous meeting and also this evening, our notice to all property owners. Included in that notice was a notice to Somerset County. We did provide to the board an affidavit saying that the county was notified. We provided the yellow, or the white slip indicating that the county was notified. And also, we've had correspondence from the county in reviewing this application, which indicates that they did receive notice. I believe the county has received notice, and this is a non-issue. And perhaps, Council, you can opine on that before I get to the conservation easement.
Yes, so notwithstanding the reports that have been issued by the county, I did have the intention to review the affidavit of service that you did provide to us. And in that affidavit is the United States Postal Service Certified Mail Receipt to Somerset County Planning Board. In addition, the return receipt card for the certified mailing. So I'm satisfied that the county was properly notified in accordance with the MLUL for that particular issue.
Can I proceed to the second issue?
I believe you can, Mr. Lanford.
Okay, I think probably to clarify that issue, it would be best if we swear in our engineer, so he can respond to the issue of the easement. And I'll have him testify at this time solely for that issue. If we can have Mr. Ardmann sworn.
Mr. Ardmann, are you, can you hear me? Mr. Lanford, is he on as a panelist?
He was. He's been in communication with me this evening. He said he was in.
He's muted.
No, I'm in.
Okay, sir, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
They state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
Certainly. Mitchell Ardmann, A R D N A N. Licensed professional engineer with a real school. Address is 575 U 48.
Is the board hearing, Mr. Ardmann, I'm having a little bit of difficulty. I just want to make sure he's being heard.
There's a bit of an echo, Mr. Lanford. It's my end.
Okay, Mitch Ardmann, there.
Mr. Ardmann, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, that's better. Mr. Ardmann, you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional backgrounds?
Certainly, with a bachelor's science and similar degree in community high university.
Mr. Lanford will accept his credentials. We've seen him and heard him many times, as long as his license is intact.
License is still current. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ardmann, you prepared the site plan, which is the subject of this application?
I did.
Okay, and as part of the preparation of the site plan, and as a result of submissions to the DEP, there is a conservation easement that is being proposed as part of our application?
That's correct.
And is that, where is that conservation easement being proposed?
That is the fault, just within our property. If you look closely on the map, you'll see there's a dual set of lines.
Mr. Ardmann, we're having, I'm having difficulty here, and is the board having difficulty?
Yes, I am.
Okay, any better?
That's better.
Okay. So there are the wetlands, which are designated in the rear corner of the property. There's a 50-foot offset from that line. And then there is the conservation easement outside that. That conservation easement ends at our property line. We are required by DEP to show any off-site wetlands, so we can show how the buffer impacts our site. The line shown on the adjoining properties is just a buffer. The conservation area is not on the adjoining properties. It ends our property line.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Ardmann on that issue.
Just to sum up, Mr. Ardmann's testimony, the DEP requires you to show the wetlands, but you are not proposing any easement aside from what is noted on this site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. For that, Mr. Asadorian, do you have any rebuttal?
No, I guess my only question would be, when you look at the application, it shows a proposed easement off-site. If the applicant is now stating that there is no proposed easement off-site, then I just want that to be clear for the record and let the board make a determination.
Okay. Mr. Lanford, one thing, is the affidavit of service marked as an exhibit?
It, I don't know if it has been marked, but perhaps it should be marked. Normally, in this municipality, we provide it in advance. It's normally not marked, but if there's a concern, Council, we can have it marked as A1.
I think that that's appropriate, since it was raised as an issue. Again, I indicated that I did have the occasion to review it, and I did see the white slip. I would ask that that be marked as an exhibit for the record.
Okay, and I'd just like to make a final point on the issue of the easement, or the alleged easement on other properties. It is pretty hard for me to tell them that somebody would say that I am providing an easement on property that we don't own. Obviously, the
Mitch, I just changed you to presenter, if you need to present something.
I'm just arguing right now. Thank you, Christine. It would be hard pressed to say that an applicant can provide an easement to any state agency, DEP, included on property they don't own. As Mr. Ardmann said, he's required to show that on the plan. I don't think there is anything in the application itself or any of the other documents which shows that there is an easement on the adjoining. I think the notice is appropriate.
Okay. Mr. Asadorian, final word to you?
No.
Nothing else? Are there any other procedural issues regarding the notice from Council?
Not on my end.
No. Hearing none. Mr. Chairman, again, I had the occasion to review the affidavit of service, and I did see the notice to the county. I am satisfied that the notice requirement in that regard is appropriate. The affidavit of service has been marked into the evidence as A1. I think also the engineer's testimony regarding the easement is clarify that issue. The DEP requires the off-site easement be shown, but that the applicant is not proposing an easement onto those properties. For those reasons, I am satisfied that the notice is sufficient, and the board can take jurisdiction, and the applicant can proceed.
Sounds good that we could move on then.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we are here this evening for a site plan approval and conditional use variance to construct a house of worship on property known as 60 South Middlebush Road, Block 37.02, Lot 46.03. Houses of worship are permitted as conditional uses in the zone if we had met all of the conditions of the If we had met all of the conditions of the conditional use standards, we wouldn't be here. We would be before the planning board. However, we are before this board because there are three conditions of the conditional use standards that we do not meet and are seeking deviation from. And this board, having heard numerous applications involving houses of worship, have always heard the same three songs about what the variance is that we are seeking. The first is the parking requirement, whereby strict interpretation of your ordinance, we are required to have 457 spaces, and we are proposing 157. The second is the buffer requirement, which requires a continuous 15-foot buffer around the perimeter of the property, provided that that said property abuts either a residential zone boundary line or- we are seeking a waiver or a variance from that condition. And the third also deals with the parking, which limits the parking in the front yard to no more than 10%. Here, we have more than 10%. So those are the deviations that we will be seeking, and we will explain them, show them to you on the plans, and we will provide testimony in support of that. There are also two bulk variances. There is a side yard setback of 75, where 75 feet is required, and we're proposing 67.9 feet, and a rear yard setback where 200 feet is required, and we are proposing 50 feet. I have the intention of calling five witnesses in this matter. I will be calling the architect, the site engineer, a representative trustee of the applicant, a traffic consultant, and a planner. So if any board members have specific questions on specific issues, they know what witnesses will be coming down the road and can direct their questions to those respective witnesses. My first witness this evening is Mr. Mistry.
Mr. Lanford, so you've concluded your opening statement. Before you proceed to your witnesses, I'm going to give the other counsel, the objective counsel, the opportunity to also give an opening statement if they so choose.
Thank you, Gregory Asadorian here. If the board pleases, I would prefer to give opening on our case in chief.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you, Mr. Legana. This is Martina Bailey. As I put myself on the record, the last hearing, I'm representing Ray and John Snyder, who are owners of the abutting property, the next-door farm. And we will be providing, we expect to be providing witness testimony later in the proceedings. And I will be making opening remarks as well later in the proceedings. So I'll defer my remarks until then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lanford, your first witness?
Yogesh Mistry.
Mr. Mistry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you please raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear a front of testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
Yogesh Mistry, M-I-S-T-R-Y, 350 Clark Drive, Bud Lake, New Jersey, 07828.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mistry, will you be using exhibits in your testimony this evening?
Yes.
Christine, can we have Mr. Mistry be the presenter of his testimony, please?
You should be good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Mistry, what is your occupation?
Licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background, please?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. Licensed architect since 2000. I've been practicing in various capacities. I currently have my own firm in Bud Lake, New Jersey, where we do commercial architecture, everything from office buildings, apartment buildings, hotels, as well as-
We'll accept him as a witness as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your practice, Mr. Mistry, have you prepared architectural plans before boards for houses of worship?
Yes, I have.
And you've testified before boards regarding houses of worship?
Yes, I have.
On approximately how many occasions?
I would say at least four or five occasions.
Okay. Can you indicate to the board what we are proposing this evening? And we'll first of all talk about the exterior of the building, what it will look like, the materials, and if-
Sure, I'm gonna see if I can share this screen here. Oh wait. Can you see my screen here?
I can.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, maybe I'll start from the outside. And this is referring to a 3D color rendering that was prepared by our office. It's just titled Proposed House of Worship DBVI. There's no date on this, but-
Can we have them mark day two, Mr. Legana?
So mark.
So this is a view of the, from the front, kind of right, front view of the proposed temple. I guess it'll be explained later in the site drawings. It's towards the rear of the property. There's a parking in front of the building. There's a parking in front of the building, and what you're looking at is sort of a covered canopy where cars could drop off patrons to the facility. You know, there's a set of front doors. There's glass windows along the front, which kind of is their sort of lobby atrium space you come into. And then the taller element towards the back is their kind of main multipurpose slash prayer hall. And it's kind of a, you know, it's a completely, it's a one-story building. That portion that's higher, it's still one story, just has a taller ceiling there. The building itself, the front portion of the building is about 20 feet from grade to the parapet. The back of the building or the taller part, it averages 34 feet 6 inches when you take it from average grade, because the grade dips down a little bit in the back. So when you average that out, it's 34 feet 6 inches, which is within the 35-foot height allowance. The exterior materials itself, it's a white stucco that we intend to use, mainly because for religious reasons, there, in this organization, they tend to use white as their sort of primary religious color in their clothing, as well as, you know, their traditional temples in India. The, I'm gonna switch over to the plans and elevations that were submitted as part of the architectural submission. I don't know if these need to be marked, because these were part of the application.
I think if they were part of the plans set, you can just refer to them as whichever page they are.
Yeah, so I'm referring to sheet 8 2.01 of the architectural drawings. It's dated 9/27/19. And in essence, this is a floor plan of the proposed building. Towards the bottom of the page, again, where you see these six squares, that's the drop-off for the portco share. And then the entry doors are right above that, just kind of pointing to that. And then it leads into sort of an atrium lobby space, where people would kind of just enter and gather before they entered the main hall. The first floor itself is 21,083 square feet. There's a small basement portion shown here. It's really just like a utility basement. We had to add it because of some sprinkler pump requirements. And, you know, due to gravity, you have to, the sprinkler line, there's a sprinkler tank underground, sort of left of the building, and it has to be piped back under the building to work on gravity. So there's a portion of this back building that has a basement, and the basement is 2,533 square feet.
Mr. Mistry, is the basement proposed to be habitable space?
No, it's, again, it has utilities for the sprinkler pump and just storage area.
So the only habitable space for this facility is on the first floor?
Correct.
Okay, can you take the board through how the house of worship works and functions?
So again, you'd enter the building towards, from the front. It's kind of a lobby atrium space, you know, along the front as well. There's a small donation office at the, you know, as you enter. And then behind it is a coat and shoe room. Traditionally, they do, you know, for some of their events, they remove their shoes prior to going into the hall. And then the main square of the building is the worship hall. The square footage of that is 6,864 square feet, which is this kind of the open area in front of the stage. There would be a stage sort of in the center of the space. And then behind it, they actually would put a platform with their idols and, you know, the elements that they worship to. This would be used as a multipurpose hall in terms of having other religious programs or cultural programs for their organization, where they would use the stage. There would be a curtain here where they could kind of partition that off when they're not using it as a prayer hall. And on either side of the kind of stage are just more sort of, I guess, changing areas or dressing areas for any participants that would be involved in one of their cultural programs on the stage itself. On the, sort of the left side of the building here, just more services. There's a set of men's and women's toilet rooms. There's a warming kitchen. We are not proposing any cooking on site. The food would be bought from off-site and then warmed in this kitchen, and then it would be served within this multipurpose hall. I think it'll probably be explained later, but a part of their religious practice is sort of the serving of food or offerings after their programs. And back here, just more storage for the kitchen, and then utility room in this back corner, additional storage. And then these back rooms are for tables and chair storage that enter back onto the hall. And this is just an AV room, and then a corridor that leads to a fire exit in the back.
There are two exits? There's the main entrance, and then there's emergency exit to the rear of the property?
Yeah, we have a few, you know, I mean, there's an emergency exit here. There's also sort of a side exit on the side. And then, you know, the rear, there would be a, I mean, there has to be a fire exit on this side for the main hall, so we had to add an exit back here. And then because of the grade difference, you actually have to come out and go down a little bit, and then kind of there'd be a walkway back to the front if there was ever a fire to get out. You know, we've been asked, a lot of times, we don't put the sidewalk, but the building department comes back and asks us that, you know, if there was a fire, they can't just walk on the grass. They need to have a paved area that leads back to the sort of front of the building. Again, it's, you know, mainly a one-story building, except for that small basement portion at the back. This is kind of just a depressed patio. It's just the way the grade works. We had to make a small retaining wall for these doors to kind of work properly. And then just a little patio in the front. Again, there's a kind of parking area on the, right in front of that. At the front of the site, again, there's a driveway, long driveway that leads off of South Middle Bush that leads back to the building. I think when you see the site plan, you'll see the long driveway. But at the front of the driveway, we're proposing a small freestanding sign. It'll be perpendicular to the road and just have an area for their name and address. And, you know, I believe it meets all the requirements. But I think there is a variance for the number of sides or number, you know, you'll have one, but you need two sides because of the way it's oriented. We want people to see the sign from driving on either side of South Middle Bush, so they don't miss the property. It is actually easy to miss that driveway, because it's kind of hidden behind trees and so forth. So we will meet, you know, all the requirements for the other signage. I know there was something in the report about conforming to the-
I think Mr. Arndman will deal with that in more detail, Mr. Mistry, so we can move on from that. We'll have him testify to that. Can you go to the next exhibit, which shows the elevations of the building?
Yeah, so this is sort of the 2D elevations. Again, it's just quite easier to see in that rendering, but these are just more 2D elevations. Again, the, you know, if we take the average grade to the highest point, we're at 34 feet 6 inches. But, you know, the majority of the building is just 20 feet tall, which is kind of the kind of one-story portion that wraps around the main hall.
Okay, where will you have the air conditioning condensers or any other condensers for utility, for services to the building?
Yeah, they will be on the roof. I mean, you could see that we had shown them here. So they kind of, you know, because there's a parapet, the roof is actually below this top point, so that, you know, by the time you put the rooftop unit, they might extend a little bit over, but they'll be towards the center of the building. So, I mean, you'd have to be like really far away to see that. You know, this one, you could see that it doesn't even pop above this parapet. It's kind of hidden. So they're kind of screened just by the parapet walls themselves.
Okay. Is there any lighting proposed on the building, on the exterior of the building?
Yes, there is. You know, there's some small lights along the front, which are mostly just decorative. And, you know, it's the front of the building. We want to put some lights, wall sconces, you know, at the front of the building. Then around the other side, it's more just security lights. I mean, like on the right side that you could see here, there's three security lights. Probably be on motion sensors, so, you know, if there's any issues late at night that could go on.
Okay, and there are, for the record, no spires or steeples or anything else of that nature that would protrude above the height of the building that you testified to?
Correct, this is what you see here is what it is. It's just a flat.
Okay. Thank you, I have no further questions of this witness.
Okay, we have decided for this hearing, right? We're going to be questioning individuals, so Mark, is something-
Yeah, well, let me just, let me just, two procedural things. Bruce McCracken, board member, has joined the meeting. I want to make, I want to unmute McCracken. I want to have an understanding of when he's tuned in and then have our attorney advise us whether he's eligible to vote on the matter. Bruce?
Yes.
So when did you log in?
Right at the beginning.
Okay, so you've heard the entirety of Mr. Mistry's testimony?
Yeah, no, I was here when the, oh, well, let's see. 20 minutes ago.
Okay. And so, Dan, any concern or issue about Mr. McCracken's ability to-
No, I do not. If he heard the entirety of Mr. Mistry's testimony, then I am okay with him proceeding to a vote.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I could just, since the beginning of the meeting was a little choppy, I just want to, again, mind that the public format of this meeting, there's going to be a series of people providing testimony. So just now, you heard from the architect. The way that this is going to go is first, the board is going to ask the architect questions. After that, the opposing counsel will have the opportunity to ask questions. Then we will open it up to the public. So right now, if you wish to ask the architect questions on the testimony you just heard, that's the point where you should use the raised hand function in WebEx, which was described before. You could go to the participant icon in the lower right-hand corner. Click on that. A screen will open up with all the participants. In the bottom right-hand corner of that screen is a little hand. Click on that, and that'll notify us that you wish to ask the architect questions about his testimony. If you're calling in, you can press star three and it'll do the same. Later, you'll hear from, we'll hear from the engineer, the traffic engineer, the planner, etc. But we will ask you to raise your hand at that point if you have questions of those experts. Then after that, there'll be public comment where you can provide your comments to the board that that you want to to give. So right now, we're just looking to see if the questions of the architect can use the raised hand function, WebX, or star three if you're calling in. Thank you.
Okay, for right now, are there any board questions for the architect?
Yes, I have one. The you mentioned the thirty-five foot average height of the taller section of the building. What is the maximum height that that can be?
No, the the maximum height is thirty-four feet six, based off of average grade. You are allowed up to thirty-five feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any any other questions from the board? And Mark, I guess we could hear from the opposing attorneys.
Yes, that's my understanding of the format.
I do have one question. What is the view of the of the, what will be the view of the building from South Middle Bush Road?
I think that would best be answered by the site engineer when he puts the building in context with the property.
Okay, other questions?
Is it open to the objectives or are you asking the board members?
Okay, we can open to the attorneys, Mark.
Mr. Asadorian, I believe that's you. You you can go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mystery, is your license in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Now, can you describe the surrounding area?
When you say surrounding area, the
The adjacent properties, right?
I I mean, there's there's farms, sort of like to the left and behind us.
Counsel, I'm going to object to that question. I I don't think that really goes to his testimony. I will have the site engineer testifies to the surrounding areas, but I think that question is not dealing with the issue of architecture.
I think it does because it goes to whether it blends into the neighborhood. And I think architecture is important when you discuss materials and colors and blending in.
His testimony was really geared towards the this particular building and the architecture layout of this particular building. I think Mr. Lanford is correct that the site engineer. That question is better posed for the site engineer, who can give the surrounding area and put it to context.
Very well. Mr. Mystery, this entire building is going to be white. There's no other colors?
The the, I'm going to refer back to the sheet here. So that there is a sort of a two-tone, the front building, which I was showing before, is all white, and this tall portion. The idea was that sort of the religious section of the building would be white, and we kind of changed the stucco color for kind of as the building wrapped around on sort of the kitchen side and then the back storage side. It would be like a warm gray color, so just to contrast the two sort of components within the building and kind of display them outside. So really just sort of the the main part of it would be, yes.
What percentage of the building will be white versus gray?
I I mean, I don't know the exact percentage, but you know, maybe sixty, forty.
And are there any materials being proposed other than stucco?
Yeah, there's some masonry below the building, below the windows here. We want a masonry band below that. I mean, there's steel, there's there's windows, there's glass and aluminum. And the canopy would be steel.
But as far as the exterior, it's mostly stucco?
Yes.
Now, you described some of the elevations, and I believe if I understood your testimony correctly, the top of the parapet is average grade of thirty-four point six feet. Is that accurate?
From average grade to the top, yes.
Okay, now, does that mean some parts of the building are lower than thirty-four point six feet and some are greater?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't understand that question completely, but
Sure, let me rephrase it. If I understood you correctly, the thirty-four point six feet represents the average grade height, correct?
Correct.
And for it to be average, you take measurements from different locations, correct?
Correct.
And which locations you take measurements from, and what were those measurements?
The the average grade was given to us by the site engineer, who, you know, is doing the grading around the building. He establishes the average grade. From that point, we we take a measurement to the peak and, you know, it's that's what we, how we determine the height of the building. And that's that's based based on the definition in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so you yourself did not measure it?
I'm sorry?
You yourself did not measure it? You relied
It is measured on our drawings. The site engineer gives us a a datum line that says this is your average grade, and then from that point, we take the dimension to the peak.
Okay, when you look at whatever document you relied on from the site engineer, were any parts of the height in excess of thirty-five feet?
I mean, if if you take from a a lower grade point, yes.
Right, and that's my question. Where exactly on the site plan is that height exceeded and what is the
In the rear of the building, it's a little lower here. You could see that it dips down. This is referring to elevation three here, the rear elevation where it dips down.
So what is the height at the rear of the building to the top of the parapet?
I don't I don't have that dimension of hand right now.
Okay, but it's greater than thirty-five feet, correct?
It's slightly, yeah, I mean, if this is thirty-one, maybe a little bit more.
Do you know if it's ten feet or ten percent greater?
Oh, I I I could tell you it's not because you could see just just judging this thirty-one six and you could see that it's, you know, a couple of feet further down.
On how many locations of the site is the thirty-five feet exceeded?
I don't know. I don't know.
More than one?
I you can't, I I don't know if there's a, you can answer that question. I mean, you could take a spot every every two inches and and say that succeeded at this this point, so.
Well, if you had to tell me what percentage of the proposed temple exceeds the thirty
I don't have that data in front of me right now or that calculation.
Do you know if the site engineer has that information?
It's possible, I don't know.
Okay. Now, I believe there's also going to be a side patio, correct?
Correct.
What is the purpose of the side patio?
One is to kind of deal with the grade there. It dips down and we want to have the kind of the end, you know, make a small retaining wall and just carve that out to have a sort of an exit there.
Is there a reason why the patio was not put on the other side of the building? Further away from the adjacent property owners?
There's no no exits on that side. We have two exits that lead out to this, you know, patio so they could get out and
Is the patio impervious or pervious?
You know, it it's meant to be like pavers.
And how many square feet is it?
I offhand, I don't know. It's something the site engineer might have.
And do you know if the applicant is going to hold outdoor events where a patio is going to be used?
That I'm not sure.
Now, I also believe you testified with respect to the basement. It's approximately twenty-five hundred thirty-three square feet, right?
Correct.
And nothing is going to be in the basement except for utilities?
Utilities and some storage, I guess. There's just, you know, we had to get the sprinkler pump pit in there.
But there's going to be no events or services or anything like that?
No.
No seating or anything like that?
No.
No congregation rooms, nothing?
No, there's no windows or anything to that space either.
Now, with respect to the first floor, the totality of the first floor is twenty-one thousand eighty-three square feet?
Correct.
And I believe you also stated that there is a drop-off, right?
At the front of the building.
And what's the square footage for the drop-off?
You mean the 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 canopy?
No, the portico share.
Yeah, I I don't know the exact square footage. I mean, it's enough to get a car, you know, it's a two-lane, you know, one car could drop off, one car could pass, sort of, yeah.
I believe I read somewhere in the application, it's approximately one thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet. Does that sound accurate to you?
I I don't, it could be, I'm not sure.
Now, when you prepare your architectural drawings, do you take into account the square footage for the first floor as well as the basement and as well as the portico share?
No, we we never count the portico share. It's just an outdoor, it's a canopy essentially, it's the drop-off point for people to you know, be picked up or dropped off.
Well, what about the basement? Would you agree that the basement should count as square footage in connection with the square footage on the first floor?
The the square footage is part of the building. It, I mean, I mean, you know, in terms of parking calculation, you know, we count the main, the prayer hall, there are no occupants in the basement.
Well, I guess what I'm asking you is, because the application and the notice states that the building is going to be twenty-one thousand eighty-three square feet. However, the first floor alone is twenty-one thousand eighty-three square feet. In addition to that, it also has a basement of twenty-five hundred thirty-three square feet and another portico share for seventeen twenty-eight square feet. And my question to you, would you normally count the basement and the portico share with respect in addition to the first floor?
I'm I'm going to object to the question, counsel. We went through the issue of whether the notice was adequate at length last month. The your counsel ruled on that. There is nothing in the M L U L that requires us to give exact square footages for each of the anticipated uses within the building. And I think that issue has been addressed. And and just for the record, and I don't want to go back into it, but the notice did indicate that the building was twenty-one thousand square feet and twenty-five hundred square foot basement in the notice. So if that's been addressed, I'm going to object to the question.
Mr. Asadorian, is your question attempting to rehash the issue of whether the notice is satisfactory or is there another point to the question?
Partially, and the other point is whether these calculations were taken into account for parking and things to that effect.
That's a separate issue, so if you can proceed on those grounds. Mr. Lanford, your objection is noted for the record.
Thank you. Mr. Mystery, I believe you also testified that there's going to be a kitchen, correct?
It's a warming kitchen, yes.
What does a warming kitchen consist of? I don't understand when you say that.
It just areas to warm up food. They're not cooking, there's no hood there. Other than that, you know, they kind of have cleaning services like three-bay sinks, hand washing sinks, dishwasher, yeah, they got a refrigerator there, but there there are no hoods or cooking areas.
Is food normally served after a service?
I I don't want to speak on behalf of the the organization and how they conduct their events.
Okay, well, do you know when food is anticipated to be warmed up there? Is it, meaning is it for a religious ceremony or would it be if a wedding is held there or a non-religious ceremony?
Yeah, I I don't believe, you know,
Objection. He's not a member of the Congress. Objection. He's not a member of the congregation. He wouldn't know this information. I won't have somebody from the congregation testify.
Well, he may know the information, whether he is or is not part of congregation.
I think the the information, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Asadorian, the information is what is in the warming kitchen? What kind of facilities will the warming kitchen encompass? Could you answer that question, Mr. Mystery?
Yeah, I think I did. You know, there's some washing areas, there's some warming areas, there's just no cooking areas there, you know. Some mop sink in there, some some shelving, storage. That's what it is, you know, we would bring the food in and that's catered from outside, prepared or, you know, get it together and and get ready to be served.
How many square feet is the kitchen?
I mean, there's a dimension here. It's twenty-seven two and a half inches by twenty-seven feet, two and a half by sixteen feet. Sorry, eighteen feet.
And you said there's a, I believe the whole, or I'm sorry, the service area is six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four square feet?
Correct.
Are there going to be seats in the hall? I'm sorry, the service area? Are they
When they're having you know, if they're eating, yes, they're they're bringing out tables and chairs. It's this tables and chair storage here.
And how many tables and chairs can be fit there at its greatest peak?
That I'm not sure.
And I believe there's also a stage, right?
Correct.
What is the stage going to be used for, do you know?
It's combination of their cultural programs. It's like a stage that, you know, more you know, they might have a speaker there that day, you know, their sort of their priests would would kind of lecture from there. And their idols are sort of along the back of the stage where, you know, sort of behind this curtain.
Do you know if there's any concerts that are going to be held there or dances?
I'm not sure.
Now, I believe you also testified with respect to signage, correct?
Yes. Those signs on the building, just the the one freestanding sign at the front of the the long driveway.
Before I move on to signage, with respect to the food, you said the food is going to be delivered. Do you know what type of deliveries and where?
No.
Do you know where the food will be brought in and and dropped off?
I I mean, it would be brought up to the front. There's a side entrance here that would probably be brought through this, either this entrance or this service entrance and be brought into the kitchen.
Now, with respect to signage, there's a double-faced sign that's being proposed, correct?
Yes.
Is that internally lit?
No, we have uplating on on either side.
And the requirement is space at twenty-five square feet and two faces at forty-four point four square feet, right?
Correct.
And I believe there's also a requirement for area, total area not to exceed twenty-five square feet, and the total area here is sixty-seven point five square feet, correct?
Yeah, I I believe, I I think there was a comment on this saying that, you know, our calculation shows an area sort of creates a rectangle around the actual sign. I think in the sort of the broader interpretation of sign calculations that you have to count the the pilasters and the base as well, so that when you count this whole thing, I believe it exceeds the the twenty-five square feet. Because you're essentially five by thirteen-six, you multiply that out. Yeah, that's sixty, that's sixty-seven point five square feet. That's how it's done.
And the number of, I'm sorry?
No, we feel that that sign is, you know, scale of that size is appropriate to the, you know, the scale of the site. And just for clear visibility that people coming to the facility are not going to miss the the property and just keep driving around. And we we think it's, you know, it's five foot height, it's not meant to be obtrusive to anything.
And how many colors are proposed?
Probably only two. We're proposing, yeah, I know there was a comment that we meet the scenic corridor requirements, which we have no problem of doing that. You know, it's gonna be like a precast stone base and pilasters, which are essentially beige color and then, you know, we kind of keep in the same character as the rest of the sign.
And is this gonna be illuminated twenty-four seven?
No, I don't believe so.
Do you know what the hours are?
No, I don't know.
And do you know the exact location of the sign?
It's on the site engineering drawings, which I think the site engineer would probably be better to point that out to you.
Okay. Do you, and the sign is for people traveling on the road, correct?
Yes.
Do you know a speed limit for the road where the sign is relocated?
I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
Sure, I'm sorry. Do you know the speed limit of the road where the sign is located?
I don't.
Would you agree with me that the purpose of a larger sign is for faster speeds to be able to read a sign?
Objection. He's testifying as an architect. We do have a traffic consultant who will testify and a site engineer who could deal with those issues. Again, these are outside the scope of his testimony.
Well, actually, he opened the door. He said the sign is larger, so people don't have a hard time missing it and you can see it.
Mr. Mystery, can you provide some testimony as to why the size of the sign was chosen?
I just felt that was the appropriate size. I mean, I didn't check the speed of cars flying by, but, I mean, you can't put something that's two by two and expect people to see it either. I've been past that site many times, you know, easily missed that driveway, so, you know, we just wanted something that was somewhat, you know, appropriate to the, to the site.
Now, with respect to lighting for the sign, are you proposing LED lights?
They're uplighting for the signs. All lights are LED these days.
And do you know what the wattages?
Offhand, no, but they're usually like ten to fifteen watts, these for LEDs.
Do you anticipate any spillage?
No.
And how many wall sconces were you proposing?
On the, on the pier?
Yes.
There's one on each side, so it'd be a total of four. One here, one here, and then the opposite side.
And I believe you also said there's gonna be some security lights, correct?
Not on the sign, but on the building.
Right, on the building itself.
Yes.
How many security lights?
Offhand, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to go around and count, but like, you know, these are labeled as security lights, these are the small lights along the perimeter. There's three on that side. Three here. Those are meant for security only and go on on the sensor.
And do you know what the lumens or front candles are for those lights?
Uh, not at this point.
Do you know the height of the location of those lights?
Off of grade, I mean, this is probably like ten feet off the ground, maybe, you know, maybe a little higher in the balance to get further back.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay.
Tina Beatty, I have some cross-examination questions as well, please. And I'm gonna put my video on here so you can see me. Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mystery. Just going back to the sign very quickly, I just want to be clear, I understand. And I'm looking at A two point oh one. What portion of that diagram is what you would describe as the base as opposed to just the face of the sign?
This kind of lower portion where you see, you know, I guess maybe the first foot there, it's kind of what we're calling a precast stone base, but that horizontal portion there. And it's kind of two pilasters on the end and then the actual sign is really in the middle.
Right, the forty-four point four square feet, that is both sides and that includes the supporting structure and the base, is that right?
No, I think my calculate, the, I think one of the engineers' reports stated that you had to calculate the entire sign as part of the sign area, even the pilasters and bases, and rather than just the sign itself, it's just the way this township, you know, does the sign area.
And just to be clear, so that's the, is that the twenty-two point two square feet that's indicated on your plan?
No, the twenty-two is this, this kind of rectangle I'm showing, and it's labeled as two foot four by nine foot six sign area that leads to twenty-two point two.
Do you have the dimensions?
We tend to put the sign, we're not gonna put the sign letters on the, the base or the pilasters, it's just.
Right. And do you have the dimensions for the entire structure of the sign, including?
Thirteen-six by five feet high.
I just would like to go back to the roof and if you could pull up the elevations during A four point oh one. Now, you had indicated that the height and what you're considering the height of this building is essentially goes up to the top of the building and that includes what you're describing as the parapet, is that correct?
Right here, yeah.
And on each of these elevations, the parapet's height seems to be a little bit different. It's a bit hard to tell because you're providing the, you're providing the height of the first floor and of the entire structure, but not of the parapet itself. But that doesn't mean that the height of the parapet changes around the building, is that correct? So what I'm, what I mean is if you look at the right side, let's see, the rear elevation, for example, the parapet on that diagram looks to be about eleven feet. On the left side elevation, it's about ten feet and then on the front elevation, it seems to be more than that, fifteen feet. Or am I misreading that?
No, this, this high roof or the, you know, the multipurpose hall has the, there's the taller portion of the building. And at every point, it's thirty-one feet six inches from first floor. That, you could look on each.
I see.
Feet six, thirty-one feet six. Now here, we're just missing the label, but the reason it's, it's measured here is that we're measuring from average grade here.
I see, I see.
And that's why it's thirty-four feet six from average grade. So, but from, from the first floor to here, it's still thirty-one six.
And if you're inside the building and you're looking up, if you're in the middle of the building, you're not gonna see all the way up to the top of the height of the parapet, are you? There's a, there's a ceiling inside, correct?
Of course. You, you would lose like five, six feet easily there because of the roof deck, the structure, this drop ceiling and stuff, so you could easily lose like five, six feet in there.
Right, you mentioned that part of the purpose of that space was to have utility condensers that would occupy a portion of that parapet space. I mean, approximately what portion of that space is occupied by utilities such as the those those utility condensers that you mentioned?
There, there is, I mean, for this size hall, you might have two units up there that serve the hall. They're just bringing in, you know, hot and cold air down to the, to the main hall.
Right, so and, and you said there was a roof deck, is that being used for anything else or it's just? It's just the roof and it's surrounded by essentially what's kind of a wall that extends above the, the wall of the first floor?
Yeah, I mean, this parapet is not this high. I mean, the, the actual roof might be somewhere a few feet from this top point, you know.
Okay, that was my, my question earlier, I was trying to go to that, that point. If you're looking, if you're inside the building, where's, where's the ceiling in terms of the parapet? Is it at the top of the parapet or is it somewhere below that?
The, the roof itself is probably like right where you see the bottom of this, this we're depicting as a rooftop unit here, like the HVAC unit. So it's sitting on the roof and you're not seeing it because it's hidden, but the roof would be right sort of where the bottom of this is a couple of feet from the top.
So are you, you're not considering the parapet part of the roof?
The parapet goes beyond the roof. The parapet is taller than the roof.
Okay.
And that's what we're measuring to, is what we're measured to, top of parapet right here. The roof deck is like over here, which is probably like maybe two and a half feet down from that parapet.
Okay. And why does it need to be that high? Why does, why does the parapet need to be that high? I'm looking at.
Part of it is to screen, screen the rooftop units and the other part is that the roof deck is not totally flat, it slopes up and down to allow for drainage. So you gotta have a little bit of height in certain areas to allow for that slope to kind of creep up. So, I mean, that's kind of standard, standard practice, that height.
Okay. And what, what exactly is the definition of a parapet? I was trying to figure this out earlier and I'm still not entirely clear on what, what a parapet is there to function, apart from screening, which may be a perfectly legitimate function.
A parapet is just an extension of the exterior wall that goes beyond the roof line. That's it.
Okay, so it's, as a technical matter, it's considered part of the height of the building?
Yes.
That's your testimony. Okay.
Can I interject here, as the planner and the zoning officer for the township, it does not count towards the building height. So I have, on, on my report, on page seven, I asked Mr. Mystery for some clarifications on building height. The definition is the vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the finished grade at the front of the building to the highest point of the roof. There's another section that says, building, it's one twelve twenty-eight A, building height does not include parapits extending above the roof that are five feet or less in height. And then I asked Mr. Mystery to provide calculations on the plan. His, he keep, on the, the plans, the elevations that are before you and on the site plans, they're citing a height of thirty, thirty-four point six. I think when they actually do the calculations correctly, it's gonna be lower than that. Because they are measuring, they are measuring to the top of the parapet. They need to measure to the top of the roof as long as the parapits, and this is if I could offer, if I could just ask for one clarification from Mr. Mystery. How, maybe you've answered this, how tall are the parapits above the roof?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly, Mark, but it's probably around two and a half feet, which is what I mentioned, but yeah, that, you're right, that number would only go down. Obviously can't go any further higher because the roof deck would be lower than the parapet.
So.
I can give you that calculation.
I think Mr. Mystery is going to have to provide that. What we have done in the past is we usually use a point every ten feet along the front of the building. And then whatever that average is from the finished grade, that is the established building height for the building. And again, it's not including the parapits as long as they're under five feet in height. So thank you. I just want to clarify that just so, so the record's clear. Thank you.
But, Mr. Healy, if I may, what you're saying is if the parapet is more than five feet, it is considered part of the height?
That's a good question. I would say, I would say it would be, yes, because it basically says you don't include it if it's five feet or less. So if it's six-foot-high parapits, I would say then you would have to count it towards building height.
Okay. Mr. Mysteries, but just to be clear, so you said the, the height of the parapet above the roof is about two point five feet. Is there any way you can just illustrate that by pointing on the diagram? Because it's not clear to me, the parapet appears to me to be more than that above the ceiling or above the roof, what you're describing as the roof.
The roof is like right here. You can't, obviously can't see it because it's behind this wall, but where my arrow is pointing, that would be around the roof line. Do you see where my arrow is pointing there?
I see where you, yes, I see where you're pointing.
A little below where the parapet is. So, I mean, technically, if we strip the whole parapet off, the roof would stop over here somewhere. So I think what Mark is saying, you only need to measure to this point, not even to this, if the parapet is less than five feet. So, you know, we're, we're kind of measuring to the worst-case scenario, but if we actually go by Mark's definition, this would go down, let's say, two and a half feet, so that.
So by that definition, the actual height of the building is more like thirty-two feet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I did want to just ask you about some of the interior uses. You, you mentioned, I think, that there would be a small donation office. Did I catch that right?
Yeah, in the front here.
In the front. You also mentioned in your opening introduction that you had done many designs for houses of worship like this. How customary is it to have a donation office in a house of worship? Is this unusual or have you seen that before?
No.
Is that an architectural question or does that go beyond that? It seems like we're getting bogged down. This isn't architect.
Okay, fair enough. But I think you said there was more than one office, am I right? Or is it just one office space? And that would be the donation office?
Yeah, we're only showing one office.
Only showing one office. You had mentioned earlier that you described the, the hall as a multipurpose hall that would include, you know, besides the, the services, cultural programs. I'm curious, in, in your design of this building, whether part of the criteria that you were using to design this space was, was based on the usage of this being multipurpose and being for cultural programs?
What was it?
In other words, let me rephrase that. Is the, the design, to what extent is the design driven by the, the multipurpose criteria for this usage versus any other usage? In other words, presumably, clients give you, you know, the criteria that they're looking for. And that would include, you know, the use of a prayer hall for services, but also other programs. I'm curious, let me put it differently. Is the size of this worship area designed to accommodate programs and activities other than prayer?
Well, the cultural programs, yeah. That, I mean, the, you know, the primary focus would be the prayers and worship area.
Right.
You know, there's, they don't have a separate area to do anything, you know, besides you know, the worship, so they wanted to combine that in one, one area.
Right. Okay. And I just would like to go back to one, one of the question, which is back to the, the aesthetics of this building. And I understand that the stucco hasn't, is consistent with the cultural or the, the nature of the the place of worship here, that there are cultural or religious reasons rather for making this stucco. And I just wanted to follow up on, on Mr. Asadurian's questions about that because part of the criteria for the scenic corridor is to preserve the aesthetics. I'm, I'm curious if you considered alternative designs or coloring or aesthetics for this building, bearing in mind that the scenic corridor criteria tries to protect and essentially to blend construction with, with the surrounding areas. Was that not a consideration? Was it purely based on the preference of your, of the occupants and the, the owners to have a place of worship that was white because that, that has a religious significance?
Yeah, it was based mainly on discussions with the, with the client, but we did consider, you know, where we were placing the building and, and, you know, I think you'll see later on from the site plan that this is a heavily wooded site, so it would be screened where about seven hundred feet off of South Middlebush Road, so it's definitely set back far. It's a low, it's a low building. I mean, it's, you know, you know, the majority of the building is twenty, twenty-five feet and then the, the other portion is thirty-five, so it's not a
Probably.
You know, a tall building that's gonna pop above the, the tree lines or anything. So, you know.
Right, you mentioned the, the front yard setback, but not the side or the rear yard? yard, um, which is much less. It's fifty feet on the, the rear, and it's, um, it's similar on the, the side yard. So the visibility of this is going to be much more from the neighboring property, would you agree? If it's, you know, if it's going to be a white building, that's more visible than if it's going to be a brown or a, you know, beige or something that blends more with the surrounding area. Would you agree with that?
I don't know the exact setbacks off of the, you know, what's the back there, and how far are the other, the, the neighbors', uh, you know, property, or their, you know?
Right, so that, that wasn't a consideration in, in, in that aspect of the design, the, the visibility from the other neighboring property wasn't a factor in your consideration, is what you're saying, I think. Is that right?
I, I guess, I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a comment here, it's not worded, wooded properly, property, it's open field. Um, the, what I'm referring to is the property that is, um, east, east of the site, um, and I'm representing the owners of that property. Um, it's, it's the land that wraps around on the east, uh, side of the lot. Um, the setback is fifty feet from the rear. And it's, I think, sixty-seven feet from the side. Um, so the visibility of this building is going to be much more apparent to that property owner than it would be from, from the road, given, given that setback. Thank you, I have no further questions at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just remind the public again, um, so we're going to have, questions of the public. Um, I don't see any public that have indicated their desire to speak, or I'm sorry, to ask this witness questions. Uh, we'll give a few moments here for them to do that. Again, in WebEx, they can use the raise hand function. We've described how to do that a few times now. They can indicate in chat either to, uh, to everyone or to me, um, or if they're calling in, you can use the star, you can press star three if you're calling in, uh, and that'll alert us to your desire to ask this witness questions. So I would just suggest we just wait a moment or two here, uh, and see if anybody pops up. In fact, I'd also ask the public not to use the chat function to send messages. Uh, it's really, it's only intended to send a message to me, um, of your desire to speak. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand, any member of the public. Uh, I think we've given them ample opportunity to do so at this point, so I think we can move on.
Okay, then we can close to the, uh, public. Who would be your next witness, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, I did just, somebody did just, uh, pop up here. Um, so let me, uh, go to, um, so I'm going to mispronounce your name. Pemaretti, I'm going to unmute you, and you can ask this witness questions. Okay, you're now unmuted, so you can go ahead and ask questions.
Yeah, thank you very much for taking my call. Um, this is Shipra Pemaretti. I'm from People's Line Road, across from the temple, off of South Middle Bush. And my question is, when I'm looking at this layout here, I don't see anywhere where the idols are going to be placed, or what part of it is going to be a religious stage, or where is that planned to be, because all I'm seeing here is just an open hall.
Uh, yeah, the, the idols are going to be placed at the rear of the stage area. I explained earlier that there's a curtain in front of that, so they can use this sort of on a multipurpose basis. They would close this curtain when they were having sort of a cultural program, if they would open it during worship hours. So it would be right here at the back of the stage area.
Okay, thanks for answering.
You're welcome.
Mark, you're not, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Pemaretti, if you could go back and, uh, press the button again, and that'll, that'll put your hand down. That way we'll know if you want to ask questions of future experts. Uh, we do have one other person. Angela Onello, let me find her on here. Okay, Ms. Onello, you're unmuted. You can ask the architect questions.
Sure, listen off, this is Angelo Onello, um, professional engineer on behalf of two adjacent properties, one being Snyder's Farm, and the other being the single-family residential property owned by Warwick, which fronts onto the Middle Bush Road.
I'm going to object to his asking questions. Both of those property owners are represented by counsel. Counsel spent the last hour asking questions. Uh, I am sure the architect will be testifying at some later date and rendering his opinion, but I don't think it's his ability to cross-examine this witness.
Uh, Mr. Lanford's objection is, is sustained. Uh, sir, are you, um, you, you are, the clients that you represent are represented by counsel, and those clients, uh, those counsel spoke this evening, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Asadorian, who are one of the attorneys. I, we are on a side chat, if you will. Uh, I, I had some comments, and I, he recommended that I request of you to allow me to ask a couple big questions.
I think it's appropriate that Mr. Asadorian ask those kinds of questions. You, um, you can make those, uh, representations when you are providing testimony on behalf of the objector, uh, but the questions should come from the attorney.
Uh, Mr. Asadorian, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is, is that substantiated? Should I ask the questions to you, or do you, from a technical standpoint, and I'm not trying to bog this down, ladies and gentlemen, I just have a couple questions, but if I cannot, I respect the board, and, uh, we'll ask that at a later time.
I think what the board is saying is, uh, if you are not permitted to ask questions at this point.
Fair enough.
Uh, you, you, Mr. Asadorian can ask the question on behalf of your client. Um, but to have the engineer, who is effectively your expert witness, ask questions, um, I would, uh, I would think that's appropriate that you would counsel, uh, conduct a cross-examination. Thank you. If you need a moment to confer, if you have a moment, uh, the questions should come from you.
No worries, ladies and gentlemen, I can handle that, uh, later on during testimony. Fair enough, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, there are, let me just, let me just confirm real quick. Okay, I have somebody who indicated they want to speak at the end, not, not now, and I don't see any raised hands, so, um, I think we're good for public, uh, questions of the-
Okay, then, we'll close that. Mr. Lanford.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I would like to call Mr. Arndman.
Mr. Arndman, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You were previously sworn as the engineer for this project?
Yes.
You remain under oath.
Very good.
Can, can Mr. Arndman be provided, uh, the ability to present, uh, and also show exhibits, Mr. Healy?
Yep, I'll do that right now.
Mr. Arndman, while Mr. Healy is bringing up your exhibits, uh, you testified that you are a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and also are you a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey? And you've testified before this board and been qualified as an expert in both on previous occasions, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we accept those credentials.
Yes. Mr. Arndman, uh, you are obviously familiar with the zoning ordinance of the township of Franklin?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you describe the subject property, uh, what it currently consists of, and also describe the surrounding land uses?
Yes, I share with you.
Mr. Lanford, um, will there be testimony both in, from an engineering perspective and a plant perspective?
Uh, I do have a planner who will be testifying. He, I'm not sure whether I'm going to ask him for any planning conclusions, but I just, uh, wanted to make the board and the public aware that he is licensed as both.
Okay, for purposes of the record, I would just ask that, um, you engage in the engineering testimony and allow the board and the professionals to ask questions regarding the engineering testimony before you move on to any planning testimony.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Very good, can you, uh, board and the public see my screen, I have an exhibit, uh, showing on the screen at this time?
We're not seeing it, Mitch.
I'm looking to share from, um- How is that?
We, we can see it, thank you.
Very good. All right, this is an exhibit we prepared, exhibit, uh, Donna Bogwane, the Yon Institute, in the I, sheet one, with the date of four, twenty twenty.
Mitch, you're not coming through clearly.
Okay, let's see, is that any better?
Yes, I think if you keep moving to your left, you, we hear you better.
Okay. So, um-
I'll, I'll be stage director this evening.
Uh, what this represents is an aerial view of the site with our site plan, uh, basically the dimension plan superimposed on the site. So, um, I guess we will mark this since it's not a specific exhibit in the set we submitted.
We're, we're losing you again, Mitch.
So this was not a specific exhibit in the set we submitted, so I'd say we want to mark this.
As eight, can we mark that as eight-three, counsel?
Are we calling this, Mr. Lanford?
Aerial view of the property with the site plan superimposed, is that correct, Mr. Arndman?
Yes, it is.
And that is, um, eight-three. So marked.
If you can see my cursor, um, I'm walking through, uh, the site and surrounding areas. The start at the top of the plan, we have South Middle Bush Road, basically runs from the south at the left side, proceeding to the right going to the left. Uh, we have, um, the property line, as I'm now running here, the black line around, and that represents, from here, we'll confront, approximately fifteen point nine-six acres, and that's block thirty-seven oh-two, block forty-six point oh-three. Again, north is up into the right. Um, on the right side of the property, there's approximately three hundred foot wide stretch of our frontage, uh, that's the open field.
Mitch, can I interrupt you? Is anybody else having trouble hearing him?
It's shaky.
Yes, we, we do.
I can hear him, but I cannot see.
He's awfully hard to hear.
I'll recap, I tried to do my volume, is that better?
I'm wondering if, if you got closer to your computer, whether it would be easier for us to understand?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, is that any better?
Yeah.
That is.
Okay.
Yes, it is, but every time you do that, where you say, is this any better, and we say, yes, it is, your voice drops back to the old volume, and we're back where we were.
Right, keep your voice up. We can't hear you.
Will do, Mr. Shepherd. Okay, so our frontage here along South Middle Bush, uh, and north is right and up on the plan. Uh, we have approximately four hundred feet of frontage along South Middle Bush. On the right, on the right side, there's approximately three hundred feet of frontage, uh, which is the open field area, and that goes, uh, directly east, uh, to the back on the plan, which is where we're here. Um, the significant part of the site is wooded, and you can see the woodlands area as I'm running, uh, all through the property, uh, which is all in the, uh, the south and eastern part of the lot. In the very southern corner of the property is the wetlands that we spoke about earlier. So there's a wetlands pocket and a fifty-foot buffer. Uh, we do have a current LOI, letter of interpretation, uh, for that wetland. There's an existing driveway that enters the site, that enters basically on the south side of our frontage, comes into the property, uh, coming east, and then swings to the existing house, uh, and outbuildings, which I'm circling here now, which is in basically the center of the wooded area of the property. Uh, surrounding the property, uh, to our north, and our eastern borders is the farm that we've heard some discussion about. The entrance drive to the farm is a little further north here that I'm, I'm pointing to you, and comes well back into the site, uh, before you get to any of the buildings on that property. Uh, that is a preserved farm, um, that is, um, lot forty-six point oh-four. Um, lot sixty-five, which is to the south of the property, is wooded area, is, uh, preserved, is Franklin Township Open Space Preserve property. So in those two areas, there are no, uh, residents, and they're preserved, so there will not be development or neighbor, or residences directly abutting those property warrants. Uh, the two neighbors that do abut us are on South Middle Bush, single-family residences, and they are shown, uh, as I said, along South Middle Bush, um, basically bordering the southwestern property on our site. Uh, the site in general, uh, this wooded part of the site slopes to the south, basically towards that wetland area. Uh, the portion of the, uh, north and eastern portion of the site slopes easterly, uh, to the farm area. Again, this is the open field area.
Mr. Arndman, let me stop you again. Is there, is there a way, could you call in? Um, I, I'm getting an indication that people can't hear you.
I don't do that, give me one minute.
Okay.
Okay, am I in?
Can you hear us, Mr. Arndman?
Yes, I can hear you, hear me.
Yes, except we lost your exhibit now.
We'll get that off. Uh, Mark, do you want to mute my, um, video portion?
All right, so you, you're calling in on your phone? I'm going to try and get them unmuted in a second. Mr. Arndman, you're calling in on your phone?
Yes, I am.
All right, let me just see if I can find you here. Your, what, what's your area code?
Nine oh eight seven two two.
Seven two two, you said?
Yes.
All right, can you speak? I, when I muted him, I, I muted him- I, when I muted him, I I muted him here and then unmuted his phone. Let me try, let me try again.
Mark, can you hear me on the phone now?
Yes, I can hear you.
But he started breaking up on the phone, he was.
Is my exhibit still up?
Yes.
Okay. And have the audio now.
Can everybody hear him?
I can, yes.
Much better.
Uh, I I hate to do this. Real real quickly, Mitch, can you outline the subject property so that the board can see it? I know you started that and I had difficulty following you. Can you show the board and the public where the subject property is?
Sure, no worries. We we have neighbors I know who want to get this right. Again, South Middle Bush Road at the top of the site. Um, the property is bound by this property line here and the black line. The entrance drive to the property is at the southern end of our frontage on South Middle Bush. Coming into the site, coming to the existing house and the surrounding buildings. The open far field is the 300 feet here on the northern side of our frontage of the property. That goes from South Middle Bush, uh, straight back to that rear property line. And the wooded section of the site is the full back quarter of the property. The wetlands I know here in the southern corner. We have a valid LOI from DEP. And there's the 50-foot wetland buffer around that. Uh, the two adjoining residence on South Middle Bush. Uh, one closest to our driveway. And the second one further south on our South Middle Bush. Surrounding farm, which was discussed uh by the uh attorney, is lot 46.04. I'm pointing out here. And the driveway from that farm or South Middle Bush is at the north, northern side here. Uh, coming east into the property, many buildings on the site are passed on the end of this exhibit. The property to the south is Franklin Township preserved lands. Uh, the farm, as I mentioned, is also preserved, so there would be, there are no residences abutting on either of those sides now. And since it's preserved land, the owner will not be anywhere that it says in those areas. From approximately 1600 feet south toward the way, uh, this property and the surrounding properties are all new age.
Mr. Artman, uh, can you bring up the exhibit showing the proposed site plan?
Certainly. That's sharing.
Okay. And this site plan is oriented in the same manner and that the previous exhibit was?
That's correct. I'm just blowing it up so we can see what we're drawing here.
I'd like to interject if I may. I I'm still having trouble hearing and my clients really can't hear very much at all, so um, I think we have a real problem with communication here. I'm wondering if anyone else is having that problem, but I I suspect they are.
Mr. Lanford, we we may want, it's already 9:30. Uh, I think we we may want to re-adjourn, start with Mr. Artman's testimony at the next hearing, and then I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions of him, of the planning, of the zoning board, as well as the uh the public and the opposing counsel. We want to just do it in one one meeting and perhaps have a better connection.
I I think we also, if possible, if if we can do a test run between now and the next meeting to make sure Mr. Artman's systems work. Is that possible, Mr. Haley?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. I know you gave me that chance the last time and it seemed good, but I'll make sure I adjust anything. Uh, we need to thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I I I am still having trouble hearing Mr. Artman myself, and I think in fairness to everybody, we probably should start his testimony fresh uh at the next hearing. I I don't think this serves anybody's purpose by continuing tonight with his testimony.
It sounds like a good suggestion.
I'm sorry about that. That will all get teared up the next time.
Are we uh clear for a next date?
Yeah, my understanding is uh why am I getting some feedback? Um, uh, I think we have an opening on October 15th. Does that work for you, Mr. Lanford?
That works for me. That works for Mr. Artman, and I will see, I'm I'm sure my other professionals should be available. I don't think we're going to get through all of them, so if we have to put one of them to a later date, we could do that. So I would respectfully request that this matter be carried to October 15th, 2020 without further notice.
Okay, well Christine's going to, um, actually, let me make her presenter. She's going to put up the oh, she's already up there. Okay, so um, the link, I'm going to read it into the record. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Franklin TWPNJ dot webex dot com forward slash Franklin TWPNJ forward slash onstage forward slash G, I believe that's PHP question mark MTID equals EE66641319FC6F2382E758FD8A9E87F74. Uh, obviously, that's really tough. We're going to leave it up for a while. If you want to, um, down now, you can also uh email the board secretary Christine Woodbury, christine dot woodbury at franklinnj.gov. Or you can call her at 732-873-500, extension 6215, if you have any questions. Obviously, our website under the zoning board has all of our future meetings, and this is on the link for the October 15th, 2020 meeting. And you can find it very easily there. For those that are going to call in, the number will be 1408 418-9388 with an access code of 1296529043. And again, I'll read that number more slowly. 408-418-9388 is the telephone number.
Um, Mr. Lanford, do you agree to a statutory uh extension, a tolling of the time for approval to the October 15th date?
I I will, in in light of how how we're moving, I will grant the board an extension of time through the end of November.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do we have any other business?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I just want to again remind the public that the format of this, we're going to hear from the uh next time from the engineer. Um, probably their traffic engineer, a couple others. We'll follow the same format of questions after each expert, and at the end of that, you'll be provided the opportunity to provide your comments to the board. Thank you.
Any further business?
I will.
A motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
A second.
Meeting adjourned. Everybody have a good weekend.